The New Jersey Open Home of the Things Act is enacted to ensure that all public access to enhanced goods, services, and activities and public bodies and any business or activity that interests is discussed for active one. In compliance with the open hearing that the Highland Park Board of Education has paused notice of this meeting, but I am working very hard to coordinate the location to be permitted, publication to the whole New Jersey and start a measure of posting on the board outside at least forty-eight hours of independence of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to be solely for the board in terms of the committee. Pro call.
Dr. Beatty?
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Here.
Dr. Coleman? Dr. Pixley?
Here.
Ms. Prus?
Here.
Dr. Schoolman? Ms. Stanio?
Here.
Ms. Bartiman?
Here.
Ms. Forrest?
We will now recess to executive session, be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve and thirteen. The Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to conduct one parent HIB hearing and to discuss matters related to personnel, HIB, and student discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with the NJSA ten colon four dash thirteen. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move that we recess to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we reconvene to regular session. Second, roll call.
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley.
Ms. Cruz.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman. Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Bartman.
Here.
Ms. Vorgies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had a few communications this month, a few on the Bartle School Survey and start times, report cards, surveys, performance reports, and after-school. We're going to be moving the approval of minutes for the hybrid workshop meeting and executive session on March 11th, the hybrid preliminary budget workshop, no, sorry, budget presentation and voting meeting and executive session on March 18th, and the hybrid workshop meeting and executive session April 8th. I move to approve those minutes?
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Dr. Pixley.
Yes.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Bartman.
Yes.
You don't have our students. Rebecca.
Oh, okay.
Renanne.
So we do not have our student representatives today because they are in Anaheim with DECA, so good luck to them. We're going to move on to our superintendent's report.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I have a packed report tonight, so first I want to start by introducing or welcoming to the podium Ms. Kaitlin Brady, the middle school principal who is going to be spotlighting four very well-deserving students. Ms. Brady?
Good evening. My name is Kaitlin Brady and I'm the middle school principal. We have the honor of doing this twice a year, and every time I'm asked for a student name, I reach out to all the teachers and I reach out to my school counselor and I ask for feedback. And this time I thought, I don't need to reach out to anybody. I know exactly who I want to nominate for this, but I didn't know if I was allowed. And the reason is because I had four spectacular students that I was so excited to bring here. So I emailed and I said, am I allowed to bring more than one person? Yeah, I don't know if that's allowed. And they said, of course it's allowed. So I am very honored tonight to be speaking about these four students. I'll speak last on behalf of myself, so I'll share what their teachers have shared about them. But the reason that I brought them here was because they are my student announcers every day, so I'll speak about that in a second. So Angela, I want to read a little bit about what your teacher said, and I will share this with all of you because you deserve to see this. So Ms. Begonia, Angela's in eighth grade, and Ms. Begonia said Angela is friendly and focused in the classroom. She thoroughly retains new vocabulary and incorporates writing enhancements, excuse me, into her ELA assignments. She leaves my first period class every morning to make the announcements and still keeps up with the rhythm of the class. Ms. Juvenetti said Angela is a curious, engaged, and responsible learner. She is respectful to all and is a dedicated swimmer outside of school. She participates in many school activities as well. Mr. O'Hara says Angela is a pleasure to have in class. She always shows up on time and prepared and sets a great example for her peers both inside and outside of the classroom. She shows respect toward her classmates and is always willing to help those in need. Ms. Fringo said Angela is a kind and conscientious student, excuse me. She has a strong work ethic and she's always willing to help her peers. Angela does a great job balancing her academic responsibilities with her extracurriculars as she is involved in Students in Action, Student Congress, and is a competitive swimmer. Ms. Anon says Angela is a motivated and hard-working young lady. She works well with her peers and is always respectful toward the students as well as her teachers. She participates in many school activities, including science ball. And Ms. Bruce, she is self-driven and ambitious. She also works well as a problem solver when collaborating with other students. She represents her school in several extracurricular activities and is also an avid swimmer who strives to do her best always. So I want to first say congratulations to Angela Chow as our first student spotlight. Okay, second we have Ms. Alyssa Recto. So Alyssa, Ms. Stern said, this is, Ms. Stern is Alyssa's Mandarin teacher. She said Alyssa is an ideal student. She has a strong desire to learn and grow. Alyssa takes on herself to advance her Chinese learning by using online resources to study additional materials. She consistently shows respect for both her peers and teachers with positive and kind attitude. Alyssa is a pleasure to have in my class. She is an inspiration to her classmates. Ms. Perez said Alyssa always leads by example. She is a wonderful musician who does not brag or boast about her talents. She consistently helps her peers when they have questions and is dependable. As her director, I am excited to see her grow as a musician and I look forward to her learning and mastering more instruments. Ms. Mars said Alyssa fulfills the three qualities I always worked for: kind, respectful, and hard-working. I enjoy her cheeky sense of humor as well. And Mr. Carter said Alyssa tends to be quiet in class, but she sets a positive example for her peers with her actions. She is always actively engaged in learning and works well with her peers. She is polite, respectful, and motivated to do well. So a second congratulations to Alyssa Recto. And I have the pleasure of having siblings, Samia and Nahal. And I'll speak about them independently, but I get a big kick out of you guys every day because it's like this sibling rivalry banter that goes on. It's like, is everything okay? No, I don't know. Yeah, we're going to circle back. And it all works out, and I find it to be wonderfully, just like, it brightens my day. So congratulations to you both. So Nahal, Mr. Carter said Nahal is responsible, hard-working student. He leaves class each morning to do announcements and always smoothly transitions into whatever we are doing when he returns. He's a positive contributor in discussions every day and he always gives his best effort. Ms. Juvenetti said Nahal is friendly, thoughtful, and very hard-working. He treats everyone with the utmost respect and always strives to do his best. He asks insightful questions and puts anything he learns to immediate use. to immediate use. He is a great role model for his peers. And Ms. Mars said Nahal fulfills, again, the three qualities I always worked for: kind, respectful, and hardworking. He's the best. All of his peers and teachers love him. So congratulations to you, Nahal. Come on. And the last student tonight is Samya. Ms. Begonia said Samya is a conscientious, conscientious student, excuse me, with understated confidence. She contributes to classroom discussions and works diligently to ensure her writing responses are comprehensive. She leaves my first period class every morning to make the announcements but is still able to return to class and participate at a high level. Ms. Juvenetti said Samya is a remarkably kind and engaged learner who is eager to excel and happy to help everyone in our school community. She is remarkably mature and handles all of her responsibilities with grace and a positive attitude. Ms. Fringo said Samya is a valuable member of the HPMS community. She is an excellent student and a dedicated member of Students in Action, Student Congress, and the Asian Cultural Club. Ms. Anon said Samya is a responsible, respectful, and a friendly young lady who is highly engaged in class. She is ready to learn and apply herself in every situation. She participates in other activities as well. And Mr. McCabe said Samya is truly one of the most school-spirited students. I agree. Without students like her volunteering their time and energy, fellow students would not be able to enjoy many of the additional activities that we have offered. Her involvement in everything from snack shack to pep rallies allows her and the rest of the students to have a truly rich experience. She is also an exemplary student in class who is friendly, helpful, and a terrific worker when she is part of a group. So congratulations, Samya. So I just want to say a couple things about these students. I, I say this often, and I apologize if you've heard this before, but in COVID, when, when we, I mean, there weren't many of us in here, but students would come in and we would stand by the door and greet them, and it was very clear that not everybody said hi back. And after COVID, I started to realize that more and more, like, you know, kids are coming in, they're listening to the music, they're doing their thing, but some kids go out of their way to say hi. And what you guys don't realize is the impact that your actions have on me. I know I'm supposed to be in charge, but I count on you. I counted on those kids to say hi to me so that I could make it through those difficult days. What do I say to you guys every single day? I, well, I just say good morning. All right, that's it. But they come in, they come in, we have a whole routine. I say the pledge, I turn it over to the guys, they do their, their thing, we practice, we read it off, and then we, we end, because every day it's an A through G days. We have, like, it's a, we're glorious gophers today, or we're, you know. Can't even think, you know, amazingly autonomous, whatever we are. And at the end, when the mic is off and it's just us, I always turn to these guys, I'm like, I love you guys, I said, and you make my day every single day. This is the best part of my day, every day. You guys don't know what happens when you guys leave. Sometimes, sometimes it's fine, excuse me, but sometimes, you really and truly are the shining moment of my day. And so I cannot thank you enough for being consistent, for showing up every day, even when I've had to be absent. You guys are like, yeah, we got this. You don't even need me, frankly, you know? And I rely on you as much as maybe you rely on me, right? We have this mutual symbiotic relationship. And I just hope that you know what impact you have on not only, you know, your peers, but on the adults in this building. I value you tremendously. I am so honored to speak about you tonight. And like I say every day, I love you guys. So, and I'll see you tomorrow.
Hey, how about another round of applause for a well-deserving middle school student? And I personally want to thank them. I had a birthday shout out for, for a song that I put in the little Friday song bucket. So I was very excited that I got a special shout out and a call for my, my birthday. So thank you for that. You're all more than welcome to stay for the duration of our, of my report in the meeting, but I understand if, that if you have to get up and leave, feel free. I'd like to now turn over the microphone to Ms. Keisha Stephan and the robotics team from the high school. And I'm, and I'm so excited because I brought a robot. And I said, and I'm so excited because you brought a robot. All right, here you go. That's for you.
Hi, guys. So we are the Highland Park High School Robotics Competitive Team. And here's Jeremiah. He has our portfolio. He'll share with you what we do when we go to competition. So when we go to competition, we have to present our portfolio to the judges so that they could have an idea of who we are. So our team number is 12417. And we are, our club is not just a competitive team. So we meet every other Tuesday in the high school. We have over 20-plus members in our team, in our, in our club. But for our team, we only have 15 members on our team. And not all 15 members are here tonight. We also have our parent volunteer with us, Ms. Musa. And I cannot go to competition without a second adult. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. The parents rotate through to go to competition with us. Our team has been in fact since 2016, but our club has been in fact for over a decade. And this year is really special, and I'll have the team explain to you why. First, we have our president here with us tonight, Ms. Teji Venkant. We also have our head of code with us tonight, Sophia Ste- Stephen. And we have our treasurer, Jeremiah, who's here with us tonight.
What do we do?
Hi, I'm Orion. Our robotics team competes in first tech challenges. We build, design, and 3D robots as well as doing outreaches to Irving and Bartle where we go and teach children how to build and code. We also, the whole, host fundraisers and try to like get sponsors to raise money for building robots as well as teaching coding and engineering to other students in our club. Next.
We printed some owls here for, like, school spirit.
So generally, we participate in a competition called FTC where they change the game every year. And this is, we have to change and evolve our robot to go along with this game every year. So as an example, this year, the main goal was to pick up a pixel and place it on a backdrop. So different orientations of pixels that we sense through cameras and coding gain more points as well as shooting a drone and hanging as suspending the robot in the air. Next slide. So this is our robot Pythagoras, and there's a picture of it.
Yeah, and you can see it here, too. Next slide, please. So our team is mostly structured in build and code, and we mostly divide our team that way. For build, we design and build a robot each year. This year, we catted and designed this robot for four iterations, and this is our fourth iteration, which was in time for states. And for code, we programmed the robot for both autonomous and driver-controlled periods. And this year, we gained a lot of new knowledge with sensors and cameras and learned a lot of new things with code. Next slide, please.
So this year, we won the second place Motivate Award at Regionals, and we got selected to be part of the winning alliance, and we were able to advance to states. Next slide, please.
So we host, so we do outreach in Irving and Bartle where we teach kids STEM principles with, using fun activities, and we also partner with FTC to host scrimmages with other teams. Next slide.
So this year, we spent $2,000, just including registration for FTC, different parts we need to build the robot, and registration for meets that we participate in. Next slide.
So the competition's over, but robotics isn't because we do a bunch of spring projects, and it's a bunch of ideas that people in the club come up with. The one in red is, we call it moving music, but we're basically trying to build a theremin, which is an instrument that you play without actually touching, and that'll help us learn more about C++ programming language and sensors. And then in blue, there's the clever keeper, which is going to be an autonomous goalkeeper. Right now, we just have the goal, but, but that's the goal. We'll make, we'll make a full goalkeeper soon, and it's going to be super fun. Next slide. So, thank you, and we'd like to thank Ms. Stephan for everything she does. Like, there's just a lot that she does, from putting in her time to getting stuff done for us, and all the parents, like, Ms. Musa here, and also Mr. Lassiter for letting us host these events at our school. So, yeah, thanks. Oh, and we have a Bartle Steam Night coming up, and we're going to be helping out there. You should all come. And if you have kids in Bartle, well, then they should come, too, because it's going to be fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, paparazzi, guys.
With Pythagoras. Pythagoras. Are you able to see it?
All right, thank you, Ms. Stephan, and to the robotics team. If you've ever been to any of the competitions, they're very intense, long days, but very, very intense and, and super fun to watch. All right, like I said, thank you. You're more than welcome to stay for the duration of, we have two more presentations, year in review for the school start and end times, and then the budget presentation for our budget hearing. So when Ms. Rodato's ready, okay. All right, onward, okay. Looking mobile now. I'm so excited. Okay, so tonight of my presentations, I'm going to start with the school start times, year in review. So like any initiative, we have, we do a lot of monitoring. So part of our monitoring, obviously, is data collection, both quantitative and qualitative data. We look across that data, and then from there, sort of look at, you know, what findings do we have and how do we use it to inform implementation, some strengths, some challenges, and areas for improvement. So for this particular, there we go, there we go. All right, so for this particular initiative, we look to provide insightful overview of adjusting the start and end times. Our, our metrics that we used were a community feedback forum. We looked at attendance and tardy data, and then really specifically for some qualitative data, the supports that we're providing for students and families. And then we looked again to identify the strengths, the challenges, and any areas that we can have for improvement. So for community feedback, we initiated a questionnaire via Genesis, and we did that as part of the distribution of report cards to try to ensure as much participation as possible. Typically, our questionnaires and forms get very low response rates, so we withheld report cards until families, caregivers went in there to complete the survey. And so we tried to capture as many of the 1,593 students as possible, so that was our total count. When we looked across, there were several times where we pulled the ones that were not completed, and we made personal phone calls and emails home to those families in their native language to try to encourage participation. So we did a lot of outreach to try to get more. And even in meetings, as we had this conversation, you could see the surveys were, were being completed. We also gave it a little bit of an extension. Bartle report cards weren't administered until the day before spring break, so we gave a little bit of extra time and some extra push for our Bartle parents and caregivers to complete the questionnaire as well. An additional Google form was used to capture qualitative comments that was distributed twice in my weekly emails, since the initial Google, the Genesis questionnaire was limited. Of the responses, there were 1,387 student responses, which is an 87% response rate. So I'm very, very pleased, although I was striving for 100%. I think 87% is a remarkable turnout for a response rate. So the data that you're going to see is all for 1,387 students. So we left all the raw data in there, so that could account for if a caregiver has students, multiple students across multiple schools. We wanted to make sure we captured all of that data. So of that, 206 students did not have a caregiver log into Genesis, which we had discussed and said that was an issue we'd like to address. That means we have some concerns about some caregivers not going in and checking report cards, so we wanted to make sure that we addressed that data. So you can see, of the total completed responses, of the 206, I did want to note, I did parse it out a little bit. So of the 206 students that we did not capture, you can see that a little over 120 of them, or a little over, rather, 100 of them came from Bartle. The next group was the middle school and then the high school, I believe. High school, then middle school, then Irving, and then one out of district parent. So we do, I'm going to save questions to the end and comments to the end. So from the district questionnaire, so what I did was we looked at the data collectively across the district and then parsed it out by, by each school. So across the district, I just have to get closer because my eyes are shot here. So across the district, when we looked at the data, district-wide, the majority of the responses came in that there's been no impact on the change in start times to my children or family. The next group that hit the highest level of responses, the change benefited my child, children and family. And then sort of hitting below, just about the 200 or survey, but didn't answer the prompt. So we did see that some of the data was that the students, some parents or caregivers, didn't respond to some questions. So that's what you see in the group right here, is that they completed the survey but didn't answer that particular prompt. Because there was other, there were two other questions. There was an open-ended question and then a question about calendar and religious holidays. And then my children and family are still working on acclimating, about the same as the change has not benefited my child or family. So that was overall by the district. Then by school for Irving. So Irving predominantly, the majority of responses from caregivers came in. There has been no impact on my child or family, so you can see that pretty significantly. Next is the child benefit, the, the change benefited my child, children or family. And then my child and, and family are still acclimating. The next is the cha, the change has not benefited my child or family. And then lastly, a small group that didn't answer the question, the prompt at all. For Bartle responses, the majority of responses coming from Bartle was that there was no impact on my child and family. The next response rate for Bartle was that they completed the survey but did not answer that question. Then the change has not benefited my family. And then we have my child and family are still acclimating, about the same as it benefited. At the middle school, predominantly, you can see that the change has no impact on their family. The next significant response rate for middle school is the change benefited my child or family. Then we have much lower response rate for completed the survey but did not answer that particular prompt. Then my child or family were still acclimating. And then lastly, the smallest group, the child, the change has not benefited my child or family. At the high school, the high school majority of the responses, there we go, says the change benefited my child or family. So you can see predominantly at the high school, we got the good chunk that says the change benefited. And then next, obviously, is there's been no And then next, obviously, is there's been no impact. And then we have just below 50 responses, the change, they're still acclimating, or the change has not benefited. Pretty much about the same as they completed the survey, but not that prompt. Next, we looked at some of the attendance and tardy data. So what we looked at was just a reminder in terms of the information. A student is considered chronically absent if he, she, or they are not present for 10% or more of the days enrolled during a school year. So when you look at the data on chronic absenteeism, it's important to note that we go by the state's definition of what chronic absenteeism is. And that means that you are not present for 10% or more of the school for the, the days that you're in session, what they call cumulative days in membership. And then also, I wanted, it's important to note when we look at the Irving data to parse it out particularly, because Irving includes preschool and first grade. However, first grade is the only required grade level. Kindergarten and preschool are not required grade levels, so we're not required to report chronic absenteeism for those grades. So in terms of, so but all the data here is Irving altogether. So for Irving, you can see that we have, from this time, from September to March, between last year and this year, we went from 119 students to, that were chronically absent to 95. So we went from a 39% to 30%. In terms of the tardy data for Irving, you can see collectively, you know, some months. So you have some months where we have, the current year is on the top, last year is on the bottom. So you can see some months where we have an uptick in the number of tardies, and in some months where we have a slight decrease in tardies. For Bartle, for chronic absenteeism, from September to March of last year, we had 90 students that were chronically absent at 21%. And this year, we have 90 students that are chronically absent, so about sitting at the same for Bartle's chronic absenteeism. And for tardy data to comparison, again, same thing at Bartle. You can see some months, we have a slight uptick. At some months, a little bit more than others for our tardy data from last year to this year. For middle school chronic absenteeism, from last year, we had 86 students chronically absent at 21.5%. To this year, we have 78 students at 22.2% for chronic absenteeism. For middle school data, again, for tardies, you can see that, again, similar, where some months we have a slight decrease and some months, a slight increase. Actually, I think middle school overall, they're, they're actually doing better with tardies. And I actually want to highlight, for example, March last year, just because it's pretty significant. Last year for March for middle school, we had 1,098 tardies at 13.7%. And this year in March, 406 tardies. So something like that is a pretty significant differential. So we're happy to see those, those kinds of data. For chronic, for the high school chronic absenteeism, last year, we had 102 students that were chronically absent at 20.8%. And this year, we're at 81 students at 15.8%. And then for our tardy data, for our high school students, because you're never tardy, right? Right? We're not tardy, we're not tardy. You can see again, some, some variation. We have some months where we have, like September, we were pretty good with our tardy. October as well, November doing well. So we have, I don't know what happened in January, we had a little uptick from last year. But overall, I think in March, too, a little bit of an uptick. So again, maybe some weather issues that come around during those months. I don't know if we're a little sleepier, not as much pep in our step. When we're getting to, getting to school, I see some, some nonverbal feedback come from our middle school students here, high school students. So that, that varies as well as what we're seeing in the tardy data at the high school. In terms of some of the qualitative, what we did was we looked across what the assistant principals and principals are doing at the building level to really parse out the supports that we're providing, because that's really important to us. So each of our assistant principals keeps accurate records of when they contact caregivers to look at some of the reasons for the tardiness in particular and chronic absenteeism, but in particular tardy data. Because it looks like, in general, our chronic absenteeism is getting better, which is awesome. And just for reference, for our middle school and Bartle, those are two targeted areas by the state. So we want to make sure we're, we're doing some targeted work to help with, with those data points. Specifically in terms of tardy, we looked at some of the supports that surround communication and collaboration. So when I looked across a lot of the reports that I was getting from all the buildings, what I saw was an increase in communication and an approach to different strategies for families that are unaware of the change in school times. So what I looked was for a lot of patterns. So we do have some students that have medical needs and some other specific, maybe mental health challenges with school anxiety and things like that, and trouble getting to school on time. But overall, what I saw a lot collectively was some issues with communication that maybe families weren't aware of the change in times. So that sort of communication was really important. So one of the things that we did was provide support from our ESL teachers and other school resources for communication, making sure that our, not only are we continuing to send our communications out in multiple languages, but contacting those families to let them know how they can look at our information in their home language as well, or their native language. So they can do that with Genesis on our website. So everything is accessible. And we wanted to make sure that we were hitting our caregivers with, with a lot of that information to let them know on how to access the resources. Like I said, communication in different languages, and a lot of one-on-one support to really personalize conversations. So what I saw in the, the reference sheets was a lot of phone calls home, whether it was from an administrator, an ESL teacher, one of our translators, a lot of one-on-one communication to encourage students to come to school. And what I saw a lot was that, you know, oh, I didn't know start times changed, or thank you for letting us know. Here's why, here's how we're struggling. And then that led to a more collaborative approach for personalized support. So for collaboration, we looked, I looked across for what the staff was doing. And they're working with families to get resources to overcome barriers to punctuality, such as transportation issues or complex family schedules, is what I saw a lot in the data. So for example, there were reports of our families, which is unfortunate, struggling to get winter coats, shoes, rain gear, when the weather is not conducive to walking to school, because they're not in a hazardous route, so we don't provide courtesy transportation getting to school. So I am incredibly proud of, of my administrative team. And they went above and beyond and dropped off bags and bags of clothes of rain gear, boots, umbrellas, jackets, winter coats to our families in need to try to encourage them. If, if you aren't able to get here for this reason, we'd like to help and support you, and here's what we can do. So those are just some examples of how we really tried to listen to the needs of our families and try to get them the resources that they need to be able to come, come to school. We've been providing positive reinforcements. We also have our school psychologists on staff that have been providing support for a lot more complex issues. So I'm, I'm not going to get into the weeds on that, especially when we're talking about student data and confidential student data. But there definitely are some, a lot of complex issues with our students, especially with school anxiety. So I want to thank the board for supporting the work that we're doing, especially with our teen center and tween center to get the students the support that they need. So overall, my findings from all of that data and work in conjunction with the central leadership team. Overall, across the district, the majority of caregivers reported that the change in school times has no impact and a positive impact. As anticipated, opinions regarding the impact on the change in school times varies amongst individuals. Seeing improvements in, we are seeing improvements in chronic absenteeism and punctuality at Irving Middle and High School. And again, what I said before, to reiterate, is school administrators are providing very personalized support. So in terms of my decision, the decision is to keep the school start times the way they are. We'll continue to evaluate, reevaluate our initiatives, just like we do every other initiative that we, that we run here at the school. So we're going to continue with our current school times for next year. What we'd like to do, obviously, besides continuing mon, monitoring our data and information, is to dive deeper into Bartle's tardy data. So that's one of the things that we're going to look at with the administrators at Bartle, is to really dive deep in that data and look at it and say, what can we do now? We're excited because we're closing that gap with our absenteeism. So what we're finding is more students are coming to school. We're just finding that they're a little bit tardy, so we're excited that they're coming to school. So step in the right direction for our families, for Bartle students and across the district. Now what we want to do is now that, you know, they're coming to school, finding out why they're coming late, and again, digging deeper into that data to analyze it more specifically and go from there. So that is the end of my presentation, but I did want to add a piece that I understand that looking at the data specifically, we're trying to show, obviously, to me, the, the kicker is the feedback data, right? That feedback data coming from Genesis has been really important and looking across, because again, it's working for some families. We understand it, it might not be working yet for other families. We are still continuing to work to provide supports. So sometimes when decisions are made, they, not everybody is happy with the decision. But overall, it looks like we're in relatively good shape, and we can provide more continuing support. We did look at tardy and chronic absentee data. It's important to look at that. But I would caution using that for causation. Right? So to kind of reframe everybody, for those that, that aren't familiar, there's a difference between correlation and causation, right? We can look to say these things are correlated, but to the extent in which they're causing, there's, there's causal impact. Are students, is the start time the direct cause of the tardiness? That I don't have an answer for. If that is something that we would like to explore further, I would recommend to the board that they reconsider some of the options in the budget for next year. Maybe pull something out of the budget and potentially put in the hiring of a statistician, someone that can really look for statistical significance in that data to really get at why that tardy data is happening. Is the tardy data increasing because of start times directly? Is there statistical significance, or are there other factors? And I know the research does also indicate that if we, by providing, if you don't provide courtesy transportation, that students that are absent and or tardy does increase among school districts. So there are a lot of other reasons why that could happen. So I just want to caution everybody to, looking at the data for, look for causation, not necessarily correlation. So what I'll do is I'll open up to the board for questions or comments. And then we will have the budget presentation. And then my understanding is we are going to have, we have to have a budget, a public hearing for, a public comment for the public, for the budget. And then we'll have, we'll move up our last public comment to after, if anybody wants to comment. And then we have to go through board committee reports. Did I get it all? Okay, that was a lot. All right. All right. So I'll open up the floor for the board.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Siska, for the presentation. I was a part of the most recent meeting with the central leadership team, and I would just like to extend my thank you to the time and investment that all of the team members, members made in gathering this data and discussing it. Is there any, are there any board questions or comments?
Yes. Thanks, Dr. Siska, for that presentation. Few comments. One, there's the early slide where you talked about the sample size. One of the bullet points up top, you said number of students responding, 1,387. I think, I, I think what, what was meant was the number of caregivers responding for students. It was this, okay, just making sure. Yeah, two, two comments on, on the, one is that, you know, there is a separate, a separate response for not acclimating, and then a response for not benefiting. I think that's essentially the same person. It's, it's someone saying, because, you know, not acclimate, not acclimating yet is a nice way of saying, it's not working for me. So you put those two bars together, it's, it's more substantial. You break them apart, it seems like there's two low things. I, I, I think visually, it's not representing that there is a substantial minority, but a substantial minority of people who, for whom it really isn't working. And especially, you know, important to understand if that includes, that's, if that is disproportionately concentrated amongst certain populations. So I think we have some more work to do there. The other comment I wanted to make is absolutely right, correlation is the causation. Yeah, and that applies to the, to the, to the decreases in chronic absenteeism and tardies at the middle school and high school, right? So we did see some nice drops. That's great. But we can't be sure that that's happening because the start time is later. So I, those are the two comments I wanted to make.
And so I just have a question on how this is reported as state data. Because I believe it's what, three tardies counts as an absence? So when we're looking at these large number of absences, are those being count, oh, sorry, large number of tardies, are those being counted as absences when we report to the state as chronic absenteeism, even though they may be in school, but they're tardy?
Yes.
So I, I really do feel that's something we need to consider.
So that would mean, to try to understand, the students who are late consistently are then also increasing our absence rate. So it, so I guess to be looking at, we're looking at which student, like, how much of this is the same student struggling that are also causing, even though they're in school, but they're causing our absenteeism. That's, that's an interesting, another way to look at the data.
And I had a question about if we have any data to compare the students that are struggling academically or socially with the students who are either chronically late or, or chronically late because they're struggling to get to school on time, or absent because they just, you know, have those amount of absence, latenesses, sorry. So I don't know, we have any data to compare that, to see if the chronic latenesses or absences, especially at Bartle, are affecting them academically or otherwise.
Dan?
I just wanted to say one, one thing. I know that we're going to keep gathering data on this. I think one of the other things is to incorporate the community feedback about the questionnaire and how it's done and the kinds of questions and responses. So I think, you know, I think that's also a goal for next year, is to kind of improve on some of that data collection. So we feel even more comfortable with, with the feedback we're getting.
And next question about, probably not this answer, but something to look into is some of that data this year. But along to, we saw last year, since we're in Bartle last year, have there been any changes within individuals that were late? Only that one, I'm saying, for the student that are late, or were the ones that were late last year, it was affecting them? In addition to kind of the deeper segmentation analysis to show if there's any.
And I just wanted to say, I don't have a question, but just think, because so many questions that were asked, I think, answered some of my questions. But I did appreciate the emphasis on the one-to-one communication. I think that was really, obviously beneficial, and it does help to kind of address some of the questions that we're having, like who may, if there are some groups that are more impacted, and you can kind of get a sense of, well, what's actually happening on a case-by-case basis. Some really appreciative of the fact that time was taken to do that.
All right. Okay. We're going to move on to the final budget presentation. Okay.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. I thought the robot was going to give our presentation. I kind of got. I kind of want to see the robot. Autonomous goalkeeper, autonomous presentation of our budget. You're going to. There you go. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, our final budget. Here we go. So we're excited to present the budget. Just for reference, for those who listened to the preliminary budget, nothing has changed. to the preliminary budget, nothing has changed. Um, unfortunately, so we're going to reiterate what we, um, presented before, and if there's some further questions, we can certainly answer them. So in terms of our budget process, just to reorient everybody, we align our budget and the budget process with district goals and objectives, the elementary and secondary education act, the every student succeeds act, and the New Jersey student learning objectives. In addition, we hold meetings throughout the course of the year. So you can see that our budget process actually begins really in October for the building admin. So in October, we send them, uh, Mr. Rosa sends a packet on budget. Uh, so it's everything they need to know about the budget process, how to do the budget process, how to prioritize their goals and deadlines. So they start with that process as early as, as the fall. So believe it or not, in a couple of months, we're going to start the process over again. And then in December, January, each of our administrators meets one-on-one with us to go through their budget, looking at priority items, new initiatives, where they're spending their money, where we're able to save some money. In those meetings, we have in every building, especially we have our director of technology, director of facilities, our title funding supervisor, so that we can kind of look at where we, what our needs are and where we can spend the money and how we can do it fiscal, in a fiscally responsible way. In addition, our administrators meet, uh, to present their budgets to the board finance and facilities committee. So they talk about their budget. That gives an opportunity for more specific questions. And then there's an overview of the entire budget to the finance and facilities, uh, committee. And then we have our board discussion that occurred March eighteenth for our preliminary budget and then tonight for our final budget. So when we have our budgeting needs, what we do is we group them into three levels. Our level one needs are our legal requirements. Mostly special education is usually a good legal, uh, a legal requirement. Anything that hits the New Jersey student learning standards, for example, offering world language. If we have to offer, um, high school courses for graduation, a certain amount of time for math and ELA at elementary school, things like that. All of those are legal requirements. Um, English as a second language, our ESL students or MLL students, any of those requirements would be legal requirements. A level two is required by board policy. So if there's specific things that the board sets as board policy, we take those into consideration when we're building the budget. So for example, if we require more or less graduation, high school requirements, if we require more things for graduation, we want them to take more visual and performing arts classes. If we have a, a detract math program and we want smaller class sizes, things that are board policy or board initiatives, we put as a level two requirement for budgeting. And then if and when there's money left over in the budget, we look at a level three, which is not required, but a high investment from our community. So that would be, for example, our mental health program. It's not a legal requirement. It's not board policy, but it's definitely something that I believe we can all agree is something that's really important that we want to sustain. So how do we provide mental health resources in our budget to our students? Or maybe a more robust music program or art program? So anything that would be something that our community values, um, would be in a level three. So in terms of, uh, fiscal responsibility for this budget, it, uh, we have to balance the continued increase in students with disability costs. So for example, coming in with special, needing special education services is increasing, uh, demands on that. Um, so we have a lot of, um, increased costs associated with students with disabilities, even including transportation. If they get transportation and transportation goes up, that is part of a legal requirement as well. We have a fiscal responsibility to maintain our facilities, any kind of federal and state mandates, um, the HPEA contract, which expires June thirtieth. So those would be obligations, uh, that we'd have to consider for the budgeting process. And then of course, we always look for ways to save money. So like I said, in the preliminary budget, I'm very proud of the work that Mr. Rosa did with, uh, in collaboration, in collaboration with the HPEA and HPAA and the board to transition out of the state benefit healthcare plan, which saved some, some money for the district to make us more fiscally responsible, to provide equal to or better than medical coverage for our staff. Um, we look into possible transportation jointers, jointures. So for example, if we have a special ed kid going to an out of district placement school, for example, and Piscataway might also be sending a child to the same school, we could potentially contact them and say, hey, you're close. Would you mind picking up our child? Then we'll pay you versus paying, um, a transportation company or sometimes offering parents vouchers and payment in lieu of the transportation. So we look for all of those. And then of course, we're looking at our student enrollment and needs. So we take a fine tooth comb with our building admins and the special ed department to really look at what our students' needs are and if there's areas that we, um, can save, uh, according, accordingly. So for this year's budget, the, this, the budget will enable the district to maintain schools fully staffed with qualified personnel. We'll maintain certified staff and current class sizes. So we're very excited to be able to maintain that. We'll be able to maintain great, robust instructional resources that are updated and aligned to standards. So in particular, this year's budget, you'll see that we're adopting, um, some changes to, uh, ELA and I believe math this year for changes, uh, for the New Jersey student learning standards. Our instructional programs, except for Mandarin for incoming sixth graders will be sustained. So I did speak about this last time, that unfortunately, uh, due to staffing that we, um, aren't, and staffing and student interest, we're not able to maintain our Mandarin program at the middle school. The high school Mandarin teacher next year will be working with the current students. So it would be the current sixth and seventh, next year, seventh and eighth grade students that still want to take Mandarin, um, and we'll be able to fit that into her schedule. And then our six, incoming sixth grade students will get Spanish. We're excited in the budget to be able to do some, uh, really great facility maintenance projects. And we're able to still provide courtesy transportation for students on hazardous routes. In addition, the budget will really prioritize some of the facility improvements, such as the Bartle Boys bathroom, uh, some masonry repair. Um, there needs to be some foundation repair in the Irving Tower, especially down where the art room is. And the flooring at the middle and high school and some other, uh, specific projects for, uh, facilities, which is great. We'll be expanding our preschool program, full, full day preschool by two classrooms next year. So we're very excited about that. Uh, we'll be also expanding some special ed classrooms. So because of enrollment, we have an extra middle school glow program, which is our self-contained, uh, classroom. So we're very excited for another glow junior class. And we're very excited to be able to maintain our interventionist. So that's a really big deal. So when we look across the budget and we're looking at student needs, obviously it's been on our radar, something that we've been looking at as administration. And I know something that's been keeping me up at night is our achievement gap. And so we've been paying our inter, the extra interventionist out of our ARPESR funds, which is the COVID relief money. So we have that money until September and then that money is gone. So how do we maintain these interventionists, which by the way, has been phenomenal, the great work that they've been doing. We've actually been able to exit students from intervention, get them in, close the gaps and get them back. So we've been doing that through some title one. So next year, we're going to continue that through title one money. However, title one money can only support it so much. So through the operating budget, the district is going to fund some of the interventionists as well. So again, looking across our priorities, that's something that I think, and I believe we can all agree is a high priority need. Uh, but we have to weigh that out with, with how we want to spend our money. So I'll pass the mic over to Mr. Rosa to talk about our finances.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, so our budget includes revenue and it includes a 2.78% general tax levy increase. Um, this is above the 2% uh, because we have additional enrollment adjustment. Uh, we have additional 29 students that was reported on our state aid application. As you could see, our state aid decreased 4.24%. Uh, and we're projecting extraordinary aid of a million dollars. Uh, currently we received 1.1 million. Um, but we will not know the number for next year until about July of 2024. But given our current expenses have increases due to the amount of need in our student population, we're confident that we'll obtain that number. Um, we're projecting $565,300 for other local sources and interest. This includes interest income, uh, tuition, uh, revenue that we receive from other local education agencies that send our students here, their students to us. Uh, we receive pilot money from our borough. Thank you very much. Um, enterprise activities like renting our facilities and refunds of prior year expenses. We also include revenue for federal aid of 56,147. It's also called SEMI. It's a Medicaid reimbursement application and that amount is determined by the state. In the budget, we're also including a withdrawal of capital reserve money to fund those projects that Christina spoke about, uh, 426,000, 129. Uh, that's the boys Bartle bathroom, uh, one of them, some masonry repairs, uh, the foundation repair at Irving, six door replacements at the middle school and some flooring replacements at the high school in Irving. We're also going to utilize, uh, withdrawal of $250,000 of maintenance reserve. And that's just to substantiate some maintenance needs that our facilities so desperately need. Um, and we're withdrawing about 60,000 of emergency reserve. Emergency reserve can be utilized for increased health benefit costs or security. Um, so we are going to withdraw it for security purposes, um, for projects to integrate Bartle and Irving's software, security software, so that the borough police department can actively see, um, those cameras if there was ever a need to. We're also going to replace an entrance gate at Irving, uh, with a steel structure that can withhold the usage that it receives. Onto our expenditures. Um, you'll see that our regular programs and instruction, we're projecting, uh, a 4.3% increase. Uh, this includes salaries and benefits along with supply, supplies. Um, uh, special education is down 3.88%. Um, but that could be shifted if you look further down, uh, to related services and out of district tuition. So sometimes it shifts depending on if the students are projected to be in, in district or out of district. You'll see that our bilingual education increased 8.76% in that salary, supplies and protocols. Um, our athletics co-curricular after school and summer programs are increasing 5.7%. It's due to some additional AEDs needed for athletics and some reconditioning of equipment that's needed. Our supplemental at-risk instruction is increasing 1.27%. Um, that has to do with, as Christina mentioned, um, the intervention is being funded out of local money. A portion of that is, is supplemented by the local budget. Our tuition, that's our out of district tuition cost is increasing 2.7%. It's also, um, net of our IDEA, our federal grant funds that we use for out of district tuition contracts. Attendance health-related services and other support services and guidance is increasing 19.55%. It really has to do with the special education related services. We have several students that need one-to-one nurses, uh, along with OTPT and speech. It also includes salaries and supplies for those areas as well. Uh, there's a decrease in special education student support services of 3.94%. Um, that has to do with a reclass of one social worker up into the attendance, health-related services, other support line. Our improvement of instructions, draft training and media services is increasing 3.62%. That has to do with the PD that's necessary to implement the new curriculum for math and science. Um, there's an increase of school, district, central and IT, uh, for, of 6.14%. Uh, we're, uh, going to be adding a position in the tech department of, to handle our student and district data. Maintenance, uh, operation of maintenance and plat, plant, including securities increasing 5.19%. And that's just due to the age of our buildings and then the need of, uh, repairing them. Our true student transportation services is increase, is decreasing 0.74%. Um, this is due to a non-public school moving into Highland Park effective in September. Um, so the district will not have aid in lieu for those students traveling outside of Highland Park. It also includes an anticipated savings for transportation jointures for out of district tuition students. As you can see, our employee benefits are decreasing 11.84%. It's directly related to the district moving away from this health, state health benefit plan into the private horizon plan. And our capital outlay is just decreasing because the number of capital projects that we're doing this year. Last year, we included three rod grants. Um, this year, we are, we're doing those, those projects that were mentioned earlier. We also have to fund students that attend charter schools. It's a 30.7% increase. Uh, we currently have projecting 15 students. I believe there's 13 currently.
Bottom line.
The, the bottom line, what does this mean for your taxpayers? Based on a 2.78 tax levy in, uh, increase, uh, for the average assessed home value of 480,493, the increase for, over the calendar year, looking from January to December, the annual change for an, for an average home would be $230.63 for the year. So our budget information is on our website. You can go to hpschools.net and there will be a button there tomorrow for 24, 25, but, uh, and you'll see our user-friendly budget there as well. Any questions?
No questions, just a big, 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 big thank you. We know that this is an art. Um, and with, uh, I've, I've been in several districts recently with my new position and the, um, the despair that is going on around the state over funding cuts and having to cut intervention and having to cut music and having to cut upwards of 30 positions. I know that when, um, we saw a cut of 200,000, we were nervous. Um, but I think that you both worked so well to really create a budget that prioritizes student academics and wellness. And I'm incredibly grateful. Thank you.
Um, I really just want to echo what Allison said, you know, I've only been a small part of this. Um, however, I do think that your prioritization of keeping the interventionists, especially in the younger grades, is so extraordinarily important for what we're going to see in future student outcomes. And as we work to improve academic importance, you know, the, a budget shows, you know, what your morals are and what we prioritize. And that, I think that's extraordinarily important. And so just thank you. And I know how hard you worked.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Can I say, uh, I would echo what Ann said, my, and, and I asked my late father-in-law used to say, don't, don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value. So I think it's, I hope it's clear what we value here. I also want to say as a new board member, and this might be helpful to, you know, to community members for whom this process can be sort of opaque and these enormous numbers and just a few columns. And suddenly what? I just want to say that not only did Dr. Suska and, um, and staff and Denise work, uh, you know, really hard on doing, you know, on the calculations and deciding, you know, but, but keeping the board members, um, informed and also, you know, consulting. I mean, the facilities and finance committee had the opportunity to sit for, I think, was it three or four, three-hour meetings where the different staff members and principals, um, responsible for different parts of, of the budget, coming up with their budgets, you know, walked us through line by line where the money was going. I feel like I, I know the innards of this budget. I know where the money's going. Um, and it's, and it's going, I, I think it's about as good as we could have hoped for. So I want, I want to thank you for that work and also for including the board and, and letting us, uh, be helpful in that process as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to our public comment, and this is for only the budget. Um, so our public comment on the 24, 25 budget, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments on the 2024, 2025 budget. Board policy number 0167 establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Anybody in person? For public comment? Okay, um, how many do we have online? Fifteen? Um, if you would like to publicly comment about the budget, please.
If you would like to publicly comment about the budget, please raise your hand and Angelo will unmute. Okay. In that case, I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following resolution for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget as described in the agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Beating?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley? Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we are going to move on to public comment. We usually have a public comment towards the very, very end of our agenda, but we moved that up this evening to now. So the public comment period, this can be on anything. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this right for your comments. Anybody in person for public comment? Okay, if you are on the webinar and would like to comment, please raise your hand. Okay, we're going to move to committee reports and recommendations. I'll start with curriculum and instruction. So curriculum and instruction did not meet this month. We were supposed to and there was a conflict and Assad at Bartle fell down and it was a big mess. So we were like, all right, well, we'll, you know, meet in May. So we meet next week. So at our next board meeting, we will have a report for you. So we have the approval of field trip. Oh, wait, some of these I read last week, so I'm only going to read what's new. The approval of job descriptions, there is a before and after school program supervisor position description up for approval. That is, doesn't necessarily mean again that we are hiring for that position. It is to approve the position itself, that it exists. We also have the approval of HIP reports. BS two-three-two-four-zero-eight, MS two-three-two-four-zero-nine-A, nine-B and nine-C, and HS two-three-two-four-zero-four-A. A, B and C, and HS two-three-two-four-zero-five-A and B. We have up for approval, a law enforcement resolution. This does not change anything that we currently do. I can have either Ms. Cruz or Dr. Suska explain a little bit more detail, but there is a new memorandum of understanding that was misspelled his own went to a training on. And in order for our school administrators to provide HPPD or another law enforcement agency with information in an emergency, we need to have this law enforcement resolution that identifies these individuals as the people who can release information. Do you want to share any more information about that?
Note, again, just so that if, for example, if there was an issue concerning, again, safety or something like that in in an emergency, they need access to student information, video camera footage, things like that. This allows the people listed in that resolution to be able to provide the police that information without needing a subpoena. If we don't have this, then the only way that they could access any of that information is through a subpoena and it might delay whatever it is that that they may be doing for an investigation. So our practice now is this. But in order to continue that practice, the memorandum of understanding that recently just came out, why they put it out in the middle of the year, I'm not really sure toward the end of the year, but they released it includes that we have to have this resolution. So it is our current practice to do that now. We just have to formalize it as part of the memorandum of understanding. And it was discussed in the safety committee meeting.
Okay, number seven is the approval of Edify pilot program for high school students. This is to pilot an AI and neuroscience-based counseling chatbot for Highland Park school students. Any cost associated with the pilot program will be the responsibility of Edify, which has MIT roots and whose founders are Dr. Izat Girardi and Professor Pawan Sidna. Edify has applied for a small business innovation research grant from the Department of Education and if approved, will allocate a portion of this grant to compensate school counselors for any out-of-school time estimated to be no more than seven thousand dollars. And then the number eight is the approval of participation interview for Bartle Elementary School. So this is for twenty of our fourth grade students to participate in CNN Anderson Cooper's three-sixty project, where they will come and interview students in May with parent permission about the upcoming presidential election. Okay, that's all I have for curriculum. Any questions?
I have a question. As far as that number seven, the approval of the Edify pilot program, is this for students to speak to AI if they have issues? Or how does that work? And if it is like that, how are we protecting the students from any kind of breach of information or just giving being given incorrect information or advice?
So it's not for the students, it's for the school counselors. So I don't know if you remember back in the day, you used to fill out a form to find out what you're like destined to be. Mine was radiology. Turns out it was wrong. But, you know, it was like sort of that career aptitude type of pen and paper. So it's a very similar thing. What they're trying to use is AI to help target support for school counselors to give personalized support for students. So the students go on and essentially create a survey. And then this AI chatbot is to essentially help the counselors do their work better, from my understanding. So the there's no sort of interaction other than the students are would take a normal online survey like they do now in they use. No, thank you, thank you. Now I had a brain fart. Naviance, so they go in and do that now in Naviance. So this is just essentially an AI chatbot that would go and help the school counselors sift through all of that data to help make sense of it, to provide targeted like career and post-secondary planning for students.
And then my next question is in regards to that. What are the protections or are there any protections or any data that is collected through AI and how that is used outside of that?
I'm not sure, so I'd have to contact the group associated with this. So I would have to, I'll contact Ms. Asamoah and ask that specific question.
Allison, can I say? So I'm intrigued. But I'd like to know more. I'm interested in, I'm just interested in how this is working. I'm also curious as to what these inventors, you know, and you know, intend the sort of ultimate role and purpose of this chatbot to be. I mean, sometimes you have, you know, there's kind of old old joke about asking factory workers to train their replacements when they, you know, help machines, invent machines to do things better, right? So sure, right now, the program is working with counselors, but before you know it, it may be seeking to replace things counselors do. I'm not saying that's the plan now, but, you know, things happen, right? So, you know, again, I mean, I think, sure, these inventors are really smart, have some great ideas. I would like to hear more from them about what those ideas exactly are.
Are there any other questions that people would like more information on? Because then I would move that we table that if that's the case. Yes? Okay, so we're going to table number seven.
I have a couple issues with number six, too. I'm sorry, I should have sent questions ahead, but.
Can you talk more to your mic?
Sure, I was focused on some other issues. So I'm a little surprised that this was current practice. And this is really broad. And I'm wondering if it might be better to provide. Like, I don't know where this resolution came from, if it came from like law enforcement. And I'm wondering if it would be better to provide like guidance on when information will be provided. Yeah, I just have concerns about how open the language is and and I think there might be ways to to shape this.
Yeah, I also have a question, actually, just to clarify. I was surprised to hear Dr. Suska, you say that our current practice is to allow law enforcement to have access to video footage of students that is actually protected under FERPA. So my understanding is that the current recommendation is that we establish this law enforcement unit or team comprised of building administrators, what teachers perhaps as administrators, I believe in law enforcement. And so doing would allow those files to be moved out of that FERPA protective status, correct?
Yeah, so for, yeah, a really good example, for example, was the the middle, the high school bomb threat was a really good example. So it came in as a Google form and we had to make a decision to be able to share that Google form because it was a student, it was a district student-generated document to law enforcement in that moment to be able to do some quick recon to determine the level of threat to the building. So that was an example of, you know, myself, maybe the director of technology, Denise, you know, people that would be critical sort of keepers of student records and information to say, we're going to hand this over for an emergency situation. We don't just, they don't just come and say, hey, we just want to see where so-and-so lives. It's about saying, okay, we're in this moment, we have this Google form, we're going to pass it over to you. Instead, if that wasn't the case, then now with the new memorandum of understanding for FERPA is they would have to get a subpoena to get that information for us to hand it over. So in that real time, that was a really good example of our current, they needed a student document. We handed it over to them so that they could do what they needed to do in in that real time. If we decide not to pass this resolution or a version of it, it's that they then would have to subpoena the district to get that record and then do work with it. So that's, those are for for examples of when those emergency situations come, when they would might need access to student records, student documents or video footage.
Oh, right, okay, so, yeah, I think I understood that the possible scenarios, especially in extreme case such as that actually experience here. But I do think I'm concerned too about just the way the resolution is written very broadly and not without any sort of specifics in terms of parameters around this and the application of the law. And I do appreciate you clarifying the fact that under the new MOU, the we would be in violation of FERPA if we were to continue this practice. But currently, we're not in violation, although.
Well, now we would be.
Well, we will, right.
Right, because the MOU just came out and was agreed on. So now, moving forward until we pass any kind of resolution, right now, they, moving forward, they have to subpoena anything. So from now moving forward, that's the the new policy, the new part of the new MOU. So until we create something, we wouldn't be able to provide them instant access to any of that that type of information.
Yeah, and I guess my question is, how long does the process usually take? And I have no idea, you know.
A subpoena?
Yeah, I have no idea.
I have no idea. I can certainly contact the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and and ask them, I have no idea.
I just don't know.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I mean, I personally think that, especially because we haven't had a chance to discuss this or even look at the resolution and think about ways to really make sure that. I know for me, I'm concerned about the way that it's very blanketed and broad in its statement without much specifications of parameters. I would like to, you know, have a more of a discussion around this before we vote on it tonight. Because I don't believe it was discussed in curriculum committee at all, was it, or?
We didn't have curriculum, yeah.
Yeah, no, it was discussed at the safety meetings.
So a question I'd have then is if we if we were concerned that, sorry, if we were concerned that in the short term an emergency happens next tomorrow, God forbid, or whatever, we would not be able to get police help. Could we pass the resolution?
Well, you can get, you can get police help, you just wouldn't be able to give them the documents.
We can't share information that they may need to keep our kids safe. Because that's the, correct. And I don't know what that situation will be, but unfortunately it happens.
Correct.
Could the resolution be passed and then then brought to to committees and maybe changed in the future to give more parameters, for example?
Right, so I was going to recommend either you, we could table it and then we just aren't providing the information and they just have to get the subpoenas or pass it and then we'll go back and see if we can find some alternate language or ways to do this so that at least we're covered in the meantime until we can perfect it a little bit more. Because I just worry that if we get in, if we go into the weeds of what it can cover and what it can't cover to try to anticipate every scenario, I just concerned that it might delay, delay it, but it's certainly worth exploring, but you have both of those options.
All right, equity and excellence.
Yes, and we did, we met, we met last Thursday, this past Thursday, April twenty-fifth. And our first item on our agenda was updates on discipline and attendance data from Bartle. My understanding is that this data was only presented for Bartle at this meeting, but we will be getting information for from other schools in subsequent meetings. The goal at Bartle has been to reduce absenteeism across Hispanic, Latino, Black, special education students by ten percent from twenty-one, twenty-two school year. To date, Bartle is meeting its goal for this population, still with the exclusion of, or exception, I should say, of special education students. There it's better, it's improved, but has not quite reached that goal of the ten percent mark. Discipline incidents rose from eight hundred and forty-three in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two to one thousand two hundred and fifty in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The goal here was to reduce this number by twenty percent. And as of March thirteen, twenty-twenty-four, there have only been three hundred and five incidents. So the numbers are way down, clearly. The committee through this conversation discussed what sort of discipline data could or how the discipline data could be better broken down so that we could look more demographically by race, socioeconomic status and special education status as well. So we'll look forward to getting that breakdown on a subsequent meeting. We talked about, you know, how administration is sort of processing this data or analyzing and understanding these results. And what was shared with us is that responsive classroom and addressing behaviors within the code of conduct has been a focus to help improving these areas, particularly focusing on classroom intervention strategies to address behaviors and to find whether the issue is that students just being bored or distracted or there are other factors involved. And then also talking about adjusting instruction to meet the students' needs. So there seems to be, from what we understood, a very comprehensive sort of safety net being put into place. There have been a lot of things in terms of whole school assemblies and changes to morning meetings as well that have been helping to address these issues and shifting those classroom environments and monitoring the behavior at the school level is also something that I think the administrators have been working collaboratively to do. So we were overall, you know, pleased to hear that data and we look forward to hearing from the other schools as well. Our second item on the agenda was our RISE program evaluation update. As we've discussed in previous meetings, we requested that we receive an independent evaluation of our RISE program and that is our alternative to in-school suspensions, our therapeutic restorative alternative to in-school suspension. And Dr. Suska has been taking the time to identify potential evaluators. And so she shared with us two candidates that she looked at with a budget of five thousand dollars. Both of these candidates fit within our budget. One of them, Peter Varela, who is a South Brunswick administrator and does evaluations and has done evaluations for school programs in the past, was considered. I think Dr. Suska decided that he may not be the best fit for what we're looking for at this time. She spoke with, I'm not sure how to pronounce this, Heiney Research and Evaluation? Costs to be determined for this one, but we hope that it will be within our our budget. But the proposal here from this particular evaluator is to build a logic model to determine what we But the proposal here from this particular evaluator is to build a logic model to determine what we think the impact. Is of our current program and the challenges to our current program. So the idea is to really start to look at also what our goal is for this program, what we, what the initial goal is and what sort of adjustments we want to make or revisions we want to make to our vision for the program. Specifically, or for example, I should say, is it to reduce ISS and address recidivism? How should this evaluator, you know, evaluate the program is going to be based on the goals of the program? So we just had a really robust conversation about how important it is to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page where that's concerned. And I'm forgetting the evaluator's name, can you read, yes, last name? It's Heiney? Kathy Heine, I just want to make sure I also, this is a person, it's not a group, this is an individual. We also discussed the importance of the need to track down initial ideas of why the program was developed, as I had mentioned. And to analyze, we talked about having an analysis of the program in terms of disrupting student, disrupting discipline incidents for historically marginalized students. We would hope to. See with the big students, as this was one of the initial goals of the program, is to reduce those disparities and dis. Pushing the students who are already marginalized out of our schools through repeated in in school and out of school suspension incidents. Program is to help to ensure that students could be in the academic setting, even if they had to be removed in in school suspension, they would still. Although this would reduce also the. Use of harsh. Historically marginalized students, so the idea is that we would look at that, those goals and evaluate. Hopefully the evaluator would be able to determine the extent to which we are reaching those goals and what we need to do to improve the program. We also talked about the importance of having the evaluation start by looking at our current data, we do have a lot of data to look at to see where the program is working and not, it's not like we don't have anything to pull from. So we discussed the importance of doing that, looking at who it's working for and who it's not working for. And then to home in on more specifically identifying why the program may or may not be meeting aspects of the goals that we established. And this may include interviews and qualitative data as well, other qualitative data. So let's see, this is just kind of more of what I've said. We also talked about the evaluation helping us to think about what data to collect moving forward, which I know Dr. Saska was really, you know, homing in on that, the importance of knowing what we need to do to really. Systemically be able to continue to evaluate this program efficiently. And making sure that we are also addressing, looking at safety as a whole and how students feel in the school. So we may or may not have the data, but it would be good to understand the student, we may or may not have the data now, I believe was part of what we were saying, we do have robust data, but we need to have the evaluator come in and analyze that. And then going forward, thinking about, okay, what data we know we need to have, and then how do we need to analyze that data? So we're looking forward to hopefully getting a proposal with the figure that works for our budget and moving forward with that process. So we thank you for always, you know, presenting that to Equity and Eclipse and including us in that process. We also talked about the code of conduct revisions that are currently. Being undertaken across the schools except for the high school, so the high school administration felt that when approached by Dr. Saska, that they don't really need to make any changes to their code of conduct, so at this point. We're looking at Irving, Bartle and Middle School making some adjustments to their code of conduct, and particularly because they are. Staff is just noticing that, especially post-COVID, they're noticing different behaviors and different incidents or behavioral issues that are arising that are post-COVID incidents, so. We need to incorporate these new sorts of behavioral issues into their codes. We talked about Irving has added. Beliefs about students and options of tier levels of support, so there are multiple levels of levels of supports that students are receiving. The board will be looking over the changes in each of the, we will try to just provide, you know, any feedback or thoughts that we may have. I think one of the biggest questions was. The extent to which these revisions are going to provide flexibility in addressing the different behaviors that staff is seeing and just making sure that the codes do allow that room to do. That kind of flexible assessment. We also talked about clarifying who is responsible for what and the sort of change of command when when we're talking about these discipline codes. And then we also talked about including students. Most impacted in reviewing the revised codes if possible, so I know that's some.
I think that's it, of course. And final revisions will be made before the end, before the beginning of the new school year.
Any questions?
I just know. It may be a bigger task, I should go on, I think it has a lot of implications, and so we noted at the time, we really, really need to look at this, and we may need to learn about it. And so just to note that it's it's how it actually gets checked and corrected.
Yeah, process.
Yeah, and then the other thing about the analyses and the evaluator, really, you know, it's balance, which makes me that we have a. And so we've got to really think about what are the things we want to provide, and you know, these are going to be as good as the data we provide, and we all are in agreement. Needs to be pretty holistic, right, not just about behaviors and repeats, how are they doing? You've had some perception data that how are they feeling, right, so there's these things that we would do like together and and provide. To the evaluator, and but again, they can't really relax. Something we're all thinking about and pretty much.
Thank you. I'm thinking also maybe we could add HIP to some of those questions, maybe having them analyze the HIP process. Okay. Who's next?
Me.
Finance, finance and facilities.
You want to avoid me, but I'm here. Finance facilities, oh, sorry, finance facilities did meet, so I do have some minutes from our meeting. It was Nikki and myself, and along with Dr. Saska and Mr. Rosa and John Flanagan and Colin, who's here tonight, Megan, Megan. All were in attendance. We had a daycare after school program update. Colin shared his new proposed budget for next year, adding the role of a part-time coordinator. To to man the phones during the day to help parents with communication. Also included pay increases for site for a number of the positions. Included a traveling nurse and a rental fee reimbursement to the district of thirty thousand dollars. That's the preliminary budget that he was sharing with us. Discussion about the consideration of raising rates, five percent next year, but that was tabled for next month, the budget presented did not include an increase in rates, so it was a conversation. Also, under that area, we discussed the status of our program in relation to state licensing. We are in full compliance of all state regulations for school age childcare programs. Including ratios. I hope I'm saying this right, but according to chapter fifty two, we are license exempt. If we were to follow the process for licensing, it would help us, it would help families, help us to get. Help us to be eligible for funding for low-income families, but flip side is, as we've kind of said in the past, it would make staffing very challenging. Because state requirements for professional development and certification would would make it hard to fill positions. And Colin shared also the process for parents to apply for state funding at this point is a complex one, so it's not an automatic. So he keeps, he's keeping an eye on the regulations and there'll be further discussions. Under facilities, John Flanagan, that was reporting on this, we had a collapse of us, I guess a soffit, that area is called outside of Bartle. And so we've had insurance adjusters, engineer has seen the area, he said first priority is a plan to stabilize a key beam by placing columns there. So the stabilization work has to go out for bid, we haven't gotten back at that point anyway, insurance, whether we had insurance, whether insurance is going to cover this or not. So there's a lot of work going into just stabilizing the area and then figuring out where we go from there. And for right now, with the move some offices and students are and rearrange how students moved in Bartle to avoid that area. Anne reported to the committee on the process of the work that's going on with the legislatures and the with the legislature and the mayor's office. To get us additional funding for infrastructure needs, and there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, we're anxious to keep an eye on that process with the hope that it'll really be helpful to the district and the borough. And Megan McNally, Ms. McNally. Shared, we're in the process of trying to get a a new sign in front of Irving. This really was brought up through the process of the borough has a grant for that part of town. And has promised us five thousand dollars towards the sign, PTA is going to contribute a thousand. We have one estimate and we needed one more, one quote, we needed one more quote. And this hopefully will all come together, it will be a sign more like Bartle sign, not fancy, not. Hard to maintain and or expensive to maintain with electricity and digital, so. But that's still a work in progress, and then then we actually did finance, the finance portion of our meeting. Denise reviewed the art, the process for the RFP for the food service management company. So a committee met on April fifteenth, and it was represented from each disc, each of our schools, an administrator from each of our schools. And Dr. Saska and Mr. Rosa to review two proposals that came in from that RFP. One came from Pomtonian and one from another company. SFE. Based on the scoring, Pomtonian scored the highest. And so, but Denise shared that the specifications in the RFP included higher food standards. So hopefully we'll see an improvement of the quality of the food with an award to Pomtonian, she's working with them to review expectations. The other item that we talked about is that the district has, is receiving funds from the Kushner. Kushner funds, the Idicushner funds, and those are still, the process for getting everything approved does not yet completed. So the district will be getting two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars for the pavilion at Irving and a greenhouse at the high school. But there's still a process for clarifying. When the funds come to us and 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 so forth, so that's still in the works as long, as well as the baseball renovations to the baseball field. Also a work in progress, not, work has not started in those projects yet. And the twenty four, twenty five budget was was as presented before and voted on tonight. So that was our minutes, and then there was this agenda here, it's rather lengthy, remember last month, last week, I was very excited, we had a short agenda, I knew this wasn't going to last. So I'll also go over the highlighted pieces that are added. So number three is approval of another, look, these pass-through funds that we are required to do. This is for technology purchases for the Renaus Bayes Yaco High School. So that is there, there's addition to, under number five, approval for professional development. Orton Gillingham training for thirty hours for thirty teachers. Which I think is awesome, Center for Responsive School, Responsive Classroom Training is added. And Inspired Instruction for our special education teachers has been added to that list. We also have. The bill list from March nineteenth to April twenty now, at April twenty nine, in the amount of two million eight hundred and sixty thousand plus dollars. We have on the agenda the approval of supplemental bill lists for January and February. Totalling one hundred and ninety three thousand six hundred and sixty two dollars. The approval of the preliminary report of the treasurer of school monies as of February twenty ninth. Preliminary report. These things always trip me up, even though I've read them. Certifying that there's no budgetary line item that has been overextended, that's as of February twenty ninth. We have board certifications also for that February, up through February twenty ninth about all of our. That was not overextended, and we have sufficient funds available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the year. Some budget transfers is number eleven. Also through the month of February, and then we have additional professional services, many of these are speech and language services. Our district is in need of additional. Help with speech and language, I believe we have somebody who's out on leave and of speech and language therapists are very hard to find and to fill in, so we've. Got lots of agencies here, hopefully they will help us, they'll be able to help us with some of the speech and language. Needs that the district has. They're on this list, necessarily we're going to be using them all, but we have availability, we have the option to use them if they have a person that we need. Also on this professional development is lots of yoga for our health and wellness month, I wish I could join you guys, this looks like fun. Yeah, for health and wellness month, a number of people to be approved to do yoga and our PE classes and during Diversity Day. As well. And then we go on to bedside instruction, and we have an additional student needed bedside instruction for our approval. We have two additional students who need to go out of district, who's been determined that would be their best program, and so that's on here. We have a student who is out of district who needs some additional counseling, that's on. Flip side, we have two students coming into Highland Park, that's number sixteen. One coming in, and so they are paying us tuition. One into the autism program, it says grade three, but it's actually grade one, so it must not be Bartle, right, it must be Irving, grade one, yes. And then the other student is coming into a resource room in grade eight. And then we have. Oh, a non-resident, a student who has been in our schools, is not a resident, but we would like to. Allow them to stay here through the end of the year, and they would be paying us tuition, so we would, that's the tuition amount for the remainder of this year. A safety grant that we received for one thousand eight hundred and forty four dollars, I think that might be added to cameras. What was that? Walkie-talkies, sorry, I didn't read that, walkie-talkies, okay, and then the food service management service contract that I talked about, approving. Pomtonian to continue for, to continue to be our food service provider. And the last ones is approval of a replacement of a heat pump at Irving and pipe insulation at the middle school. And that is all, any questions?
Sure.
There was some dollar amounts for approval for.
Space?
For some, there was something from. My assumption is that. That comes from a separate budget, right?
Yes, yeah. What was that? Yeah, they're self-sustaining, right, that's separate business, right? I don't know which one that is, though. Yeah, any other questions? Okay.
All right. Personnel and communication.
Right, so personnel and communications did not meet, but we do have some additions, so I'm going to read off for for voting. We have acceptance of resignations. It would be Kimberly Nizolek, we're sending an offer for Laraya Brooks. Excuse me if I'm not pronouncing that correctly. Shalaya Gaines, Alejandro Cisneros, Victoria Powers, Julia Milchka and Durco and Megan Harder. And then we have approval of leave of absence for employee five two five, five two four two. And employee five one two A, eight, sorry. We have approval of new hires for Dana Kessel for Supervisor of Funded Programs. Tyler Gessler, a teacher of physical education. Susan Shaughnessy for Human Resources Health Benefits and Payroll Specialist. And then we have approval of summer band camp pending contract negotiations, we needed to add that in. And, oh, we have more, and then we have approval of professional development for the PD Academy for Catherine Bender for building fact fluency in the elementary classroom. Jaclyn Fernestat for building fact fluency in elementary classroom, Megan Hawthorne for responsive classroom for secondary specialists. Then we have approval of the AP exam coverage in high school, approval of reduction in force. Approval of sidebar agreement between Highland Park Board of Education and the Highland Park Administrators Association. Approval of change of end date for the Title One After School Enrichment Program. Approval of Title One Tutoring Program for Renaus Bayes Yaco. Approval of translator for Irving Primary School, approval of after-school program staff. Approval of after-school program staff. Approval of extra compensation for power professional. Approval of lesson plan writing for the middle school and appointment of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So is the social work intern for the community teen center.
And I'd like to piggyback on the report. And as I do always, when we're approving new district administrators, I'd like to introduce and invite Dana Kessel to come up and introduce herself and share a little bit about her. Thank you. Oh, and if you just go to the podium for the microphone, sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dana Kessel. And it's a pleasure to be here. I grew up in Middlesex County and spent many a day in Highland Park when I was growing up. So it's like coming home a little bit for me. I have been an educator in the public school system for over, I shouldn't say that, maybe. For well over twenty-five years. And it's a pleasure to come back. I, I have been a teacher, a special education teacher. I have been an assistant principal, a high school principal. I have been a director of curriculum in, and all of these in both large and small school districts. And most recently I've worked for ESS, which is a substitute teacher company. So at the last year doing that. But I've missed working with students and with teachers. So I'm very excited about this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to policy.
Oh, that's making. I want to say welcome to Dana. Nice to have you. That's awesome. Hope's on you. I'll get back on here. Happy to have you. Policy did also meet this month, since our last, since our last board meeting. And Allison and myself met with Dr. Seska on April tenth. And so we went back on some policies that we had, had tabled the month before. So policy twenty-four eleven for guidance counseling. Elizabeth Esamoa had reviewed it, made some suggestions, added, we added clarification that it was an IR and IRS system that we were, that is the referral system. And it is now ready for first read. We again discussed twenty-four, policy twenty-four, twenty-three bilingual and ESL education. And Amy Coppola from the district has been, has reviewed it, made suggestions. She's still, the, the language involved in bilingual ESL, MLL, all the assorted language for this area. She's going to do a little more checking, so we're holding on that. That one is not up yet for your vote. We're going to do, look at it one more time next month. Also, so we didn't make too much progress. We put a lot of things on hold. Policy forty-three, twenty-two was about we wanting to kind of look at staff member use of personal cell phones related to emergencies and, and how they might be using their phones through, to use for inform nine-one-one. But that's still also something that further research is needed on. So that's been put aside until we get more information about how it's worked, how that's working for other teachers in other districts. And we discussed the policy eighty-eight, six-six-oh. Transportation by private vehicles. That's referring to teach, mostly teachers or staff driving students. It's something we have concerns about, Dr. Seska and others have concerns about. But abolishing the, abolishing the policy seemed like it might have more of an impact than we realized. So we decided to first send it to the lawyers to get their input on how we could potentially protect people, or maybe we shouldn't do this at all, which is sort of our feeling. And then also, Dr. Seska will talk to the leadership team to see what the impact would be on changes to this policy. So we will come back to that. And the last thing we discussed that was going forward right now. Policies go to each committee that's relevant to them. And then from there it goes right to first read. But when we looked at the, when I looked at the process, actually Darcy's process from way back. Policies would go to committees and then still come back to policy committee for one final review. So that's what we're going to be doing going forward for, for policies. So on the agenda for policy, there are quite a few. But we talked about, I talked about the last time, the only new one is that apparently was on the list there is, is about the vandalism policy, which is very similar to the regulation that's on here for second read. And basically talks about what our policy is if a student vandalizes school property. And so that's what, the, what is that, seventy-six-ten, who's up here for first read. And otherwise, the others are second read. I will say that I've been looking through this today. R-five-four-four-oh, it says honoring student achievement. Did add some things to that because it had gone to Mike Lasseter to make sure high school achievements in there. There were some things that Susan Adato went back on it, but now I think all the blanks have been filled in. So when we're voting on second read for that, it, we filled in a few of the blanks, basically listing what awards, what awards or recognition is currently being done at the high school for student achievement. So that was added. And that's it. What policy? Any questions? Good. Okay, okay.
There was an error in the agenda. We are swapping number sixteen and seventeen. So we're going to do public comment first. And then we will do our board action items. So the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation as reserved this time for your comments. Is there anybody in person that would like to comment? How many individuals do we have? Nine. If you have, if you are online and you would like to comment, please raise your hand. Okay. Please state your name and residence.
Hi, this, oh.
I hear you.
Okay, I thought I heard myself. This is Abby Stern Cardinal. I live on Harper Street. I had a couple of comments and one of them actually does pertain to the budget that you passed. So I apologize if I'm late on this, but I just wanted to make a comment. With regard to the security camera, it looks like about sixty thousand dollars were allocated for security camera for Irving and Bartle, security camera upgrades. I'm a little confused about whether there's already cameras and these are just an upgrade or if these are new cameras. I also was a little concerned that it was mentioned, similar to what Monique and Dan had said about law enforcement. I think I heard that they would be given direct access to law enforcement and that was a little concerning. I don't know kind of what, again, the parameters for that would be. Again, it was similar. I had some similar concerns about the law enforcement resolution and it kind of applies as well to this camera. So I know even though you put it in the budget, there'll probably still be further discussion and, you know, further approvals. So I just ask that you carefully look at this and what the specific reason for including this is, what was the problem that it's being solved, or are they already there and why the police need direct access? If that is, if I did hear that correctly. I also wanted to bring up pre-K for future years. I'm really happy to hear that it's still being expanded for next year. I know two new classrooms are being added. I have, you know, several friends whose kids are going and are very, very excited. My question is just, I haven't heard any updates recently about future years. And I know these things take a long time to figure out. So I was listening to some of the the reports from the various committees and I just hadn't heard anything. So I'm curious if there've been, if there's been any movement in kind of getting that figured out. Of course, I know it's a long process, so not expecting it to all be solved, but I hope that there has been some movement here. Lastly, a couple of comments. I did hear a job description getting approved. Where the person, I, I think it was the after-care program supervisor and I believe Marilyn had said that that doesn't mean that they're hiring someone, or I could be remembering wrong who said it or what was said. But I believe there is already someone who's been in that position for several months. So I just was a little confused about how job descriptions are approved after people have already been hired and what the process is there. You know, I'm not questioning the person or this specific situation as much as just is this standard to approve a job description after someone is already hired? What position, what's the description? How, what kind of descriptions are we using? And then, you know, doing that after. So that was a general question. I don't know how much time I have left, but I just had one more thing to say, which is, you know, I, I definitely have concerns about raising the after-care cost by five percent. You know, I would like to see, you know, what the justification for that is. And I, I know that there's a public budget presentation, but because it's a separate pot, I guess the after-care budget isn't included. I, I would like to just, you know, get the public. I think the public should get to look at that as well. Again, I'm not saying that there's an issue with it. I just think that we, you know, typically do get to see things like that. So I would really appreciate if that was also before anything was approved, that was a public kind of presentation or document. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Are there any other people online who would like to public comment? Comment publicly. Okay, we're going to move to action items. I'll start with curriculum. So for curriculum, we are definitely tabling. What number was it?
Number.
Number seven. Number seven. This is how I'm going to propose number six. Either way, I, we need to come back to the resolution to address concerns. If you feel that you want the resolution in place until we refine it, I would say that's a yes vote. If we don't want the resolution in place while we refine the resolution, then I, we would not approve it. Okay. All right. I would like to move curriculum and instruction. Numbers one through five, six and eight. Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes. Okay, finance?
Yep, facilities. Finance facilities. I move items one to twenty-one, am I right? Yes, one to twenty-one.
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes. Oh, wait, yes, I have to abstain from anything inspired instruction. Thank you.
It's number five.
Whoops.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes. Okay, personnel?
Okay, I'd like to move numbers one through twenty-one.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Castle. Welcome to the House. And policy.
Last but not least, I move policies one, A, A through G and two, A through G.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassel Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes. Okay, um, we will move on to board liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to report? Ms. Prus?
Okay, I can do Highland Park Education Foundation. I was on one or two of their Zooms and I'm on their email list. So they are working very hard. They had a community meeting on, I think it was about April tenth. Looking to get more volunteers interested in helping with all aspects of running the Highland Park, the HPEF. I think they got some names and some information, some people who are willing. I don't have too many details on that, but they will be at the street fair. And they're, they're really working hard on a fundraiser that will take place on June the first. It will be a barbecue fundraiser. They're going to be using Center School and cooking inside, cooking outside, eating inside. Sounds quite elaborate. Six different chefs that are barbecuing. There's going to be vegetarian and kosher options. Beer, beer company is going to be serving a cornhole tournament. It sounds really quite lovely. So June first, keep an eye on that. Yeah, sign up. Sounds like good food, good food and good drink and a very good pause. They really do, they do a lot for our district and they're trying to step it up on that. So we thank them. That's it for me.
Any other community?
I would simply be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that it is the Highland Park Spring Fling Street Fair on Sunday, May fifth. It's an awesome event with a five K that starts at nine-thirty. If you sign up for the five K before Sunday, it's cheaper and everybody should go do it. It's a really fun time.
Thank you. Okay, I do not have a president's report this evening, so we'll move on to old business. Okay, new business. Okay. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?